Water sewers.
Everything. It was extending utilities under part of the tape that wasn't.
We've got three o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you have one of these little devices, please turn it to silence and we don't have phones ringing. And please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the back of the room are sign up sheets. If you want to address the board, you have five minutes at the beginning for agenda and non-agenda items. And if you will give them to Mr. Shoemaker, he will call you at that time.
The man with the tie.
The man with the tie. I'll call the role. Our district attorney, Anthony Pierce, is here. Supervisor Tinkle is here. Supervisor Banks has not arrived yet. Supervisor Feinberg is here. Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Clarity, our district manager, Chris Shoemaker, and our CPA from Infomark is here, Stephen Bloom. And Mr. Banks, Supervisor Banks just arrived.
He's in good shape.
We'll wait for you to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. We have Ron Worley and Jim Branden.
I do want to clear, I'm not here to address the budget.
Oh, okay.
I, uh, I'm Ron Worley. I reside at 12607 Farrington Way in Hampton Park. And I am the president of the Hampton Park HOA.
Congratulations and my condolences.
The reason I'm here is because, first of all, I wanna, I wanna thank the CDD staff for responding to, I think, a handful of issues that needed to be taken care of. And they have been taking care of. I think of one, one item left. But also, we have one stormwater committee member, Avery Deming, who is inspecting weekly, and he's copying Chris on whatever he finds. And Lake Ten in Hampton Park has weir number two, and it is the smallest weir. And that weir being only two inches high, 15 inches wide approximately. The crustaceans, they look like snails. They're lodging in there and completely blocking it. So the water's going up to where the notch starts. Now, this one is, as some of you know, this notch doesn't go all the way down to the bleeder like the weir number one does. And personally, I think it needs to be cut out. And that would actually help, because then the water wouldn't have to build up that extra three or four inches before it starts going through the notch. So I do want to make you guys aware of it and ask you to please, you know, have the staff look into it. Maybe engineering needs to look at it, I'm not sure. But we would certainly like some help with getting that resolved. Thank you.
Questions, Mark?
Yeah.
Ron, are they the pink snails?
Yes.
Those are a nightmare. And are they blocking the orifice or the weir, or both?
The bleeder.
The bleeder.
The weir, I think, is the top part.
The little one down below?
That's correct.
The orifice.
Two inches, you know, the notch is two inches high, about approximately 15 inches wide. And they are just filling it up, and in a week's time, we're clearing them out every week.
And that weir already has a baffle. So those things, don't worry about baffles, they go right around them.
They're going right under it.
They'll go right around them. Yeah, those, those have to be maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson, supervisors and staff. I'm James Brand, residing at 10154. I have a non-Lake Circle in Hampton Park. I'm no longer on the HOA board. Ron and four others are gonna take my place if they can. Ron understands my humor. And was that guy, Mr. Guy, that laughed? Thank you, sir. I'm here representing myself. A Gateway blogger thinks that Supervisor Tinkle controls me. My wife of 30 years wants to know how he does that, what's his secret? Because she's been unsuccessful in doing that for 30 years. I categorically oppose the fiscal year 19 budget and its 22% or more increase in assessments. I, as some, I, as some of you, believe that it is full of frivolous expenditures, unwarranted investment strategies, and poor financial planning. Some examples: $500,000 for storm drain cleaning financed as a one-year expense. Supervisor Tinkle has stated in the past, and I think you all know this, that he believes it should be $2 million in this next year. Why? Because in past years, you didn't do your job to make sure this work was done. Capital dollars for a new building, which will cost between $500,000 and maybe upwards to $1 million. Why? So you can host community events, have a multi-use building for sports organizations, HOA events, et cetera. I believe that's not needed. My HOA just had a special meeting with over 300 people in attendance. It's probably closer to 500. We paid $300 to use the relevant sanctuary. We much prefer that kind of expense versus assessments going up so that we can build a Taj Mahal. I oppose spending any public money which benefits a private enterprise in the community. Please don't waste any public funds on the five wells for the Gateway Greens Golf Course. I know that's probably not the name of it now, but that's how I'm gonna refer to it. An easy solution is to quit claiming deed the wells as is to the owner of the golf course. I've seen Chris's estimate of $5,000 just to figure out what needs to be done. I know that Tony made a recommendation of one of the things you could do is fill those five wells with concrete. That's gonna cost a whole lot of money, taxpayer dollars. We don't need to do that. Just quit claiming deed it and give it to the person that wants to use them. One of you at a recent meeting stated that these double-digit increases in the assessments and in the budget are needed over the next two to three years. Why? Once again, because in past years, we didn't do our job. I agree that the infrastructure of Gateway needs lots of repairs and updating because it wasn't done in the past. We need to find creative ways to finance this reinvestment in Gateway. Yes, it's 30 years old and has been neglected. You can't fix this neglect in two to three years of double-digit assessment increases. Please work with your financial resources, get creative, and finance these sorely needed updates and fixes in another way besides treating it as an expense. Thank you.
Mark, comment? One clarification that needs to be made. I'm not suggesting the expenditure of 2 million. The question was, what's it going to cost to do all the cleaning of our sewers? And I said, it would cost 2 million. My idea is to do exactly what Jim said, and that is to debt finance them. And in fact, later on, we'll be discussing, a discussion I had with the SRF people in Tallahassee. And I believe there is an excellent chance to get SRF money to do the storm sewer cleaning.
Was there anyone else? Is it, that's it? All right, I will move to staff reports then.
I'll just go through a few of these items briefly. We had a page full of them. We do have a meeting tomorrow morning with the Lee County School Board staff and also staff from Johnson Engineering to discuss stormwater issues and about the issues related to school utility connections. We'll have some representatives there from Magnolia and also Hampton. They have some questions to ask, but the chair will be there trading information back and forth. So we're looking forward to that. We did have an investigation that started in profit because of the last street flooding. They had 100% blockage and some pipes there. We sent one letter over today, we called one the second one, asking them to address the situation. We haven't heard anything back from them yet. What's in the pipe is construction debris. And so they're either gonna come out and take care of it, or maybe something we have to pursue, the warranty claim. Continuing on our maintenance work on the flowways and conveyances. A couple weeks ago, we had to have a board on the maintenance needs. And right now, we are working on good specifications, including quantities, to clean those structures and those conveyances out. So we'll have those good specs in the next couple of weeks. And we'll put that out on the street and see what the dollar figure is attached to do that work. And we're also getting some quotes to investigate some of the pipe, larger sections, especially under the FPLs, and a couple of the other larger drainage conveyances. For approved installation of the water level monitoring equipment, the contractors out there today, tomorrow, and Saturday. And then they'll be back by the following week to tie things up. Over the next 10 days to two weeks, all that equipment should be up and operational.
Right.
And the last thing that I had, we did hire construction inspectors and folks who use for the gas line to be out at Stony Brook. Comcast is out there, everyone's there out the entire neighborhood. First day they were there, they had one of our water lines and blew out part of the walking path there. So to protect our own interests, we have like full-time inspection out there. And we're also making use of the ground-penetrating radar folks who are up to the end of the year and just across. And there is a house line for it, but you know, that safety line is long enough to break pipes. And that's all I had for today.
Quick, questions, Mark?
Sure.
Chris, who's Akro?
Orko.
Or?
Owners representatives, Shane and Chris Higgins, Shane Maxwell.
Okay, they're, they're gonna develop plans and specs on those three flowways areas?
Correct.
Would that not, or can we add to that one that they, I don't know that they didn't know about, or what? But the flowway on Tree Line to Pond One in North End Pelican Reserve behind the grocery store is disgusting, absolutely disgusting.
We've addressed that already. We have Woods and Lettman's going out there to do all the trimming back, cutting back, and to clear that channel.
And clear that channel?
We're just going right in there. Purchase orders aren't even issued.
Okay, that, now that's, that's a Pelican Preserve deal. How are they, how are they doing that?
Well, Pelican.
Bob, Bob involved?
There's a couple different ideas. Pelican Preserve's opinion and everything on the other side of Tree Line isn't theirs. And they have, they have not historically maintained that flowway, nor have they maintained that pond.
Whose DRI is it in?
I believe it's in Pelican.
I understand their position on it, but I don't think that it holds water.
Right, and I'm just trying to get it cleaned out.
It holds water, a lot of water.
It's not a, not a significant.
It's not a big deal, but the issue is it controls 400 acres of their property.
And there's a conservation area in Camerel right there. And they're kinda like, oh, that's, that's the district, so it's not ours. So it's just, you know, Pelican's not gonna maintain that, even though it's in Pelican.
Well, I know, two, three weeks ago, when we were out doing sampling, we ran by a back truck that was cleaning out the inlets on the commercial side, the parking lot, the backside of the parking lot. They were just pumping it over the wall into their debris and everything.
I've heard about that.
Yes, Ms. Clarity.
We're paying for this, why can't we charge Comcast for that?
Well, it's a, it's a good question, but it generally doesn't work that way. You know, they're saying, we call them locate tickets, and if they hit things, they'll go ahead and they'll pay for the damage, so to speak. And with this first round that they hit, they not only hit the pipe, but we had issue boil water notice, take samples, still have a lot of work involved. We're gonna bill them for all of that. But it doesn't help us when we have to go over there and take all that time with our staff involved. And they just don't, you know, they're kinda like, hey, we call the locate company if we hit something, or a problem. Like I said, they'll pay for it, the damage, but it doesn't help once it's already done. It's really just to keep us from having things run down the road we don't want to.
Well, I was thinking we could send, send the bill to Comcast, and they can send it to their subcontractors and have them pay for it. Because they're the ones who will make the mistakes. It's a, well.
Yeah, it's a good idea, but they won't do it, so it's self-protection.
I, I totally agree. It, it won't happen. It'd be nice, but it won't happen.
Yeah, and the key.
Nobody does business.
No, the key issue is, as long as they're using, still using the Sunshine One Call system in that we just have somebody sort of standing, watching what's going on, because that's where the liability then jumps on Comcast or their subs. If they call one, Sunshine One Call, and it's located, or if they don't call, and there aren't the locates.
Or if you have flags out there, if it's something, someone can pick the flag up and move it.
It's good to have an observer, watch how they do that.
So we photograph all of it.
I agree.
It also protects us from them just burying, hitting something and just covering it up.
That's, it's all good, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Hey, Chris, with, with Lee County School, have you been talking directly with Mark on that?
He'll be there Saturday.
And so far, do you feel like the, the school is being receptive to our, trying to understand what our position is? And there's that part of the meeting that's gonna take place tomorrow?
Yeah, and I, and I think there's been some overtures made by Magnolia and possibly Hampton about redirecting that stormwater partially into Magnolia Pond. I think so far, they've gotten like a big note, we're not gonna change anything. So hopefully tomorrow, we'll get all the cards on the table and see what they will or won't do.
Okay.
Tech, tech will be at that meeting to ask engineering questions?
I have a Danny invitation.
Go ahead.
With utility connections and, you know, what they're looking at, flows, fire flows, where they're gonna put it. And we're just trying to be good neighbors and ask them to redirect a little bit of that stormwater. It might do cost them a little money for another structure, a little extra engineering, but.
Yeah, and I, I would definitely stress that, that's our position, is to try to be forward-thinking. And this will be a very long-term partnership. And hopefully, a very positive relationship over the years to come. So this is a great way for us to start that relationship in a, in a positive manner.
Well, our, our only long-term protection for Hampton Park is that the control structure that enters Hampton Park from the east side, coming from the school. We're gonna have to put an orifice in there that simply, if their design requirements through the permitting in South Florida is three CFS, that's all that ever goes through there. No care if it floods the road, three CFS, that's all goes through. Otherwise, we're gonna flood Hampton Park. That system is not designed to handle that school, it's that simple.
Yeah, we also need to make sure we're very clear on where the areas of jurisdiction lies to what we're responsible for, what the school's responsible for. If Hampton Park is responsible for, for certain things, we can be very clear on how we're gonna address it.
I agree. And, and the, the nice thing about that, going south to Magnolia, is we don't have any of those restrictions. We need water in that Magnolia Pond bad for turnover.
And I'll come back with the, after that meeting, because I'm sure we'll have a page full of issues to discuss and start working toward.
Yeah. Finance manager, you wanna wait for budget? Okay, and utility manager?
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility manager. To give you all an update on the irrigation and what we're doing. I'm starting to do the HOA circuit again. I'm trying to get three more HOAs onto our September 1st deadlines, see if we can start piloting our master meter communities. We've got Magnolia Lakes working on their irrigation system right now on their scheduling. Champions Greens will be one. Villages of Stony Brook will be another one. And we're working with Manscape to try to get all the district stuff off of the main watering days and onto the non-watering days. If we can get the district's irrigation system off of the Saturday is the big day, we should really see a dramatic reduction in demand on Saturday and Friday nights. Or, excuse me, on Sunday nights, which is our, typically our highest nights. If we can get this, the, the goal is to get the master meter communities on their own schedule and off of the residential, residential scheduling. What that'll do for us is that being that we only have four pumps, on the peak demand nights, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Saturday and Sunday night, we are running full bore, we have, full bore, four pumps, that's all we have. If we lose a pump during the, from March to about June, for any amount of time, more than two to three days, we're gonna start seeing some real issues with our landscaping. So what we wanna do is to drop, hopefully drop, the master community, master meter communities and the district off of peak times. That should drop the demand, which mean, will give us a lot more options. If we lose a pump, we're only running three pumps, we have a backup pump. It gives us a whole array of options. And we're trying to get September 1st as the start date. Hopefully, we get that and get some good numbers and see, see what happens. That's going to be a big issue, especially when Pelican Reserve comes online and they're fully built out and we're pumping irrigation into there. We're gonna have some real demand issues. Again, Gateway Greens, I'm going to their HOA August 16th. We have a lot of utility issues in Gateway Greens that I, I felt that we really needed to address with the residents in there, because there's gonna be some inconveniences. We have three fire hydrants in there now that are going to have, they're going to, we're gonna have to shut the water mains down. There's no other way to fix them. So we are gonna have, trying to coordinate with everybody in there to get them shut down, get them in, to get the contractor in and get it all done as fast as, and expediently as possible. And with the break in Stony Brook, we found the boil water issues. We are now Class II water system, so we're really gonna have to start looking at emergency, when we have emergencies like this, who gets the boil water notice? Every time we issue a boil water notice or precautionary boil water notice, it kind of creates chaos. We get, our calls go up, knowing what's gonna do, how, how this is gonna work, when does the water come back on, what does this mean, you know, the whole. Our communication to get it to the residents is really needs to be, is what we're really gonna focus on with these boil water notices, because we found this out again with the Stony Brook break, what happened. It just creates all kinds of issues. We need, we're, we're hoping to, to develop a streamlined system to present to you all and see what you did, to give us some more options. But this is going to be an issue, especially if we have a big, if we have 1,000 people and get knocked out with water, we're gonna be in a pickle. How will we get that boil water notice out? How do we, what the procedures are that we have to go door knocking? Send out mass emails, phone numbers? How do we get this, this information out as fast as we can? And that system is in dire need of work. So we are, me, myself, and Leslie are really starting to gather all the information up to find out what our options are going to be for an emergency, a water main break, or even worse, a sewer main break. How do we get that information out? Luckily, with Stony Brook, it was, it was very, fairly minimal. But imagine if I, the main water main at, on Gateway Boulevard breaks, and we have 4,000 people suddenly out of water. We do not have staff to get that out, it's gonna be quite a process. Our mass communications, the HOA lists, we keep them as updated as possible, but they're constantly changing. To get with Champions Green with that break that we had the other day, that was, it turned into an exercise, which should have been two phone calls, turned into a three-hour exercise. Well, I don't do that, that goes to this person. The information that we have is, is, needs to be updated greatly. So we are really gonna be focusing on that and hope.
Kitty, along that line, and I understand your frustration, because I ran into it, trying to help on that. Somehow, some way, we've gotta get the word to these 53, 54, 60 sub and neighborhood associations and demand that we have the name and the number of their cams to be able to make contact with. I got ahold of the guy that was the president of the association, but he's in Naples half the time watching a family member. He can't do it. We finally got ahold of the, the property manager, but had to jump through a bunch of hoops to do it. In the meantime, swimming pools, water's leaking everywhere. But I, I think it should be the responsibility of these neighborhood associations that we have in there on the wall, the name of every cam, the name of the company, the telephone number, and a backup. So this is ridiculous, having to go through this, because that would benefit us in the event that we have a water break. We go straight to them and let them disperse the information. Like at Gateway Greens, we got like 600 people on a email deal that we can blast out. And we can put posters right at the entrances. Now, some of the communities don't have guards, and so consequently, if the people read it going in or out, you don't know. But having the names of those cams, to me, is, is critical, and they should be mandated to provide that to us.
That would be greatly in their benefit.
I mean, I think we need to look at how other government agencies send out, you know, different alerts. Emails, people just don't check emails anymore. Text messaging is probably the fastest thing from a real-time perspective that we should be looking at. I know if we look at opting in, and there's, there's some different, I think, regulations that, that's around today, in order to obtain and use personal content information. But we should be able to obtain that through, through our billing system or through the other individuals that we have, through our service records. There, there has to be a way that we can either send something, if they're, they get electronic bill, send them to a link where they can authorize. If it's through paper mail, something that notifies them to come in and opt in. We can be very explicit on how we, how we plan to use that. But, you know, calling the cams or HOAs, that's a great first step. But we need to be able to send a mass notification out via text with various types of alerts. And that's boil water notices, you know, foul weather, or the state of an emergency, or even just standard updates on, you know, 82's gonna be out, or, you know, whatever, or there's a traffic alert, or something. And that needs to either drill back to the website, so a, a page on the website, we have our alerts, or a Facebook page, or some type of system of record. And I think April was looking at something a while back.
Yes.
But we just need to resurrect that.
And that's funny you said that, because I wrote down, because I was listening to him, emergency text messages. Because I get them for weather alerts, amber alerts, silver alerts, you know. They come to both my phones.
Yeah.
They just.
But how do we get all those phone numbers for 6,000 homes?
Well, don't we have a lot of that in customer information?
I don't know.
I mean, it's gonna be a little bit of an arduous process, but it has to be done.
It is a task.
Leslie would say. You would think that every account would have a phone number, cell phone or.
It's an administrative task. You have to cross-reference your, our billing records, as well as send something out to all the HOA presidents or the cams as they're updating their information. You know, we'll need to send something out, you know, that you can opt in for. So I know there's some regulations, and I don't know what they're on the top of my head. It could be done, it might take three to six months to have a collective, but if something happens.
Some communities have boil notice sites, and they just have them out.
People always read texts. They may not get their emails right away, but they always read texts. I know I do. And I know, in Stony Brook, we set up, the president and the board members all have emails through Gmail that never change. Whoever the president is, that just passes to the next president. So the, that might be something that we can suggest to the other HOAs is to come up with an email system that, for emergencies, that will always belong to whoever's in charge.
Gateway Greens has an email address for each of the five board members.
Well, you can set up, even through these, through these texting platforms, you can set up different distribution lists. So it's your, you know, your level one is your HOAs and your cams. You can send out a, a text message alert to that distribution list. You can have a global distribution, you can have a neighborhood distribution. If there's something going on just in Stony Brook, you can isolate the different contacts to partition out the specific groups. And that's the, that's the global vision that we should really be looking for. Because even that's difficult in a, in an email, trying to send out a blast email, they change. And there's a lot more you can do with these texting platforms. You can opt in, you can redirect, you can send, you know, embedded messages. There's a lot of stuff, that's a capability we should be looking at. And I don't think they're that, that expensive. But we need something that's gonna give us the flexibility for all those different requirements that we need.
Anything else, Tony? Thank you. Public Works.
There's just a couple items on there, and it's probably gonna turn into a little House of Words, but they're gonna close Griffin, and then after that, Gateway, they do, when they do the intersection work.
Have they given you any indication? We have to be.
Now, they're still, they're talking about, first, their original dates for the first week of school. They started back.
You've got.
Oh, my God.
That's brilliant planning.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put business cards out there.
Something where there's two, a couple schools right here.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Is it gonna be totally closed, or one in, one out?
No, they, they gave us an option. They said they could do one in and one out, and it would take twice as long versus closing one and moving that opening.
But if they completely close it, it will be out for a month and a half?
I think it's four weeks, five weeks, could be.
Yeah, do, do this, do this around October 1st. That'll be, that'll work great for the first week of the elections. That'll go over real well.
But anyway, we're, we're keeping an eye on it, and we'll find out, but that could be a real problem. And we also reported at Hampton Park, the cheap solution to paint the shields black, cut the lighting down, so it was an effective solution and a cost-effective solution. cut the lighting down, so it was an effective solution and a cost-effective solution. I think everyone's happy now. And before we do any lighting projects in the future, we'll look at that, whether we need to find adjustments, whether it doesn't go wide, or whether there's houses closed by the shooting.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The road closures, okay? Can we, I mean, I would think the one lane, I know it takes longer, longer than that, especially with the school buses that are running down Griffin, but, so, and that would probably be better because otherwise, the school buses are going to be all down there in Griffin, trying to get out at that intersection. So, I'm just thinking, if there is a preference, that might be better because of the schools.
I agree with that, too. There's something as less reveals.
Well, and to that point, too, Chris, regardless of whether it's half, you know, one lane or closed, that's definitely going to increase the traffic at that certain intersection. So, have we, or not we, but the parties talked about beefing up any type of, you know, police presence there or traffic?
Sure, they would have, and I'll find out what the specifics are on the traffic.
I didn't want to assume anything, but.
Well, out there right now, at 4:30 to 5 o'clock, with the way it is present, the traffic backs on Gateway Boulevard all the way to the FPL Eastman, all the way to the FPL Eastman. And it takes like five, six, seven cycles to get out that way. So, you learn, don't go that way.
Well, and when you, if you're turning in left on Griffin or right, any type of additional traffic is going to bleed into the, outside of the turning lane, because that's only, what, maybe four cars?
Not that long.
So, that, there is some additional risk that's going to, you know, be inherent by this. So, I just want to make sure that we at least had the conversations about, okay, what are we planning for?
I'll bring a report that's the.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Chris, this might be a perfect opportunity to get started on our notification plan that Supervisor Banks and others have just been talking about because our folks are going to be terribly inconvenienced, late for work, late for school, late for every darn thing, running out of gas, who knows what, when those things are closed, is it earlier and more complete? Information that we can send to our residents, we're better off, they will be.
And we've been having a concerted effort to try to get phone numbers from a lot of our customers when they call in or have bill issues. And I think we find about 20% of the people flat, you don't want to provide anything to you at all.
Right.
You have my address, that's all you need. You have, remember, when things come out from a public agency, also, everything's public. Some people just don't want to be tied into having their name in any type of public record, but we ask people, if you want to let you know, in case for some people, they get a shut-off, no, I didn't get that, and you also have folks that rent their properties, and renters change, and they don't always tell us.
Well, it's never going to be perfect, but if somebody refuses to give you information and you put a little X beside their name, when they call in to complain, it could remind them.
Does that call a gotcha?
Most of the bigger cities have, they'll have the code red where they can put in the neighborhood they want to identify and get that message out. We'll get something back to you, too, on some pricing, how long it'll take us to institute that.
All right. District council.
A few items. Item 3B is for information only. It's a copy of the filed petition for a formal administrative hearing. South Florida Water Management District has a period of time, 15 days after the date of the filing, to either grant or deny the request. If they grant the request for the hearing, they will send it to the Division of Administrative Hearings, and we'll proceed accordingly. So, we'll know by August 7th what the position of South Florida is, whether they will deny it and, or move to dismiss, or whether the Lennar or WCI will move to dismiss within that period of time, and I'll keep you all posted as to what transpires. And I want to thank everybody that assisted in getting that filing done, that we had a little scramble to do that, but I appreciate everybody's assistance. The next item, I think we have a 4 o'clock time certain, where outside councils are going to call in on that. Item 4B, the second one, request for closed-door session ADA. So, if we can, Madam Chairman, Board, wait until 4 o'clock for that item. Just two other items not on the agenda with regards to the, we received an email, the chairman, myself, and the manager, an email from a law firm representing the Girl Scouts, that the Girl Scouts are going to the process for an administrative amendment to zoning change, change of uses, change of the map for their Girl Scout property. And it came in too late for this agenda, so we'll place on the next agenda, and the board's being requested to sign a letter of no objection. So, we're going to make that decision at that time as to how to proceed with regards.
These are the same things that they wanted us to do when we were doing the building. That ought to be an interesting discussion.
Well, let's see. Anyways, you can sit and listen, the uses they want, and so we'll provide that, and once again, it'll be the board's discretion as to how to act after getting public input.
Is there anything prompting that, or is this part of their due diligence to?
I don't know. I don't know if there's an outstanding contract that doesn't indicate whether there is or is not, it just, my assumption is there is.
Probably can't sell it.
And again, it's a no man's land from a zoning perspective, and so they had the same issues from a zoning land use perspective that was there when we had the contract with them. So, they need to overcome that at some point in time, and they realize that.
Ask them to get the, no problem with the folks at Pinecrest before they come this way.
No objection.
We can, we can ask them what the status is of those folks. I can, I don't mind asking Beverly Grady for that. Beverly's representing them on this one.
That'll send it into orbit around Pluto.
Lastly, I created a draft of the district engineer contract, and manager and Chair have it, and we'll be getting, hopefully have that back at the next board meeting.
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
The district engineer contract, the form of the agreement, and a telephone conversation and conference call last week, and we have the revised draft, and so hopefully, we'll bring that back to you at the August 16th meeting.
Can we see them before the meeting so we don't have to do a speed read at?
Well, it'll be in the agenda packet. That's our game plan, is to have it in the agenda book and meeting book, yes. Until we have the closure session or other items come up, that's all.
All right. Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
Yeah. And I'm assuming some of this is going to come up when we get into the issue of the budget, but Tony, you've been here a long time. Where do we go? Because I asked Stephen for it, and I didn't get any comments back, other than the fact that I don't think he's got anything more than I've got. Where are our rules? Where are our paperwork? Where is anything that we've got that states the basis of calculating our assessments? I can't find anything other than the original 1988 First Area and Second Area amendments that define how we're to do it. And it's my opinion that you can't change that stuff unless you go through public hearings and stuff. And I'm doing a check right now on our deal, and Pelican Reserve is what brought it to a head, but it's now, the disease has traveled into Gateway. We are full of errors in our assessments, full of errors. I mean, just blatantly wrong. And the issue is, is that, from what Stephen gave me, was that in 2009 or late 2008, a decision was made by the manager at that time, that a change was going to be made. No public meetings, no nothing, and I'm gathering, Stephen, about when I went back to look at a year's of meeting minutes, the only thing I could think that would be recognizing an agreement or a consent to it was they approved the budget. So, they changed it, the board got the budget, nobody said anything about all these changes that were made, and it got approved. I don't think that.
Is it the percentage?
Yes. Percentages, you name it, areas, calculations of acreage, I found everything. And I mean, it's blatant, really blatant. But the question is, where do you go? What is our rule of order that tells us how we should be doing it? I've been led that there's only three items that were in those original assessments. One, all residential units, regardless of what they are, are one. The golf courses, Pelican Reserve and Gateway Greens, Gateway Golf Club, is one per acre. And the last one is, all commercials treated at 5.8 times whatever the residential rate is. We have combinations of, you name it, beyond that, and I can find nothing that memorializes it anywhere. And I don't think Stephen could either, unless, Stephen, did you find something since we talked?
No. I can only find what they've done. I can't figure out anything that puts it in writing, other than, like you said, the budget that was obviously presented and through the public hearing process and was adopted.
Madam Chairman, may I ask, why are we talking about this? Didn't we hire a firm to work on the assessment?
No, no, we're talking about two things, Bill. Yes, Russ Wire is doing the assessment methodology and changing it over, but our problem is, that's all on the basis that our system, the math, was correct. We're finding out now that the math's not even correct. In other words, if we had a commercial user, all commercial users, as I read the King's English, is whatever their acreage is or fraction thereof, it's times 5.8 times the going residential rate, period. We've got every combination of that. Some places, they only measure the footprint of the building and the entire parking area, and their lakes and ponds aren't included. Other ones, they count the parking area, and their lakes and ponds are included.
Why isn't our contractor working on that?
That's not, that's not in his contract, Bill. He's doing the revision based on coming up with new assessment methodologies, not the math of what we're currently doing. But the math that we're currently doing, we were of the assumption, was correct, and it would be an easy transition for what he's doing. It's not going to be.
So, Ed, what you're saying is, in order for our contractor to come up with a new assessment methodology, it has to be translated back to how we're basically functionally approaching it today. And if there's variation in that, then it's going to be difficult to extrapolate what it's going to be in the long term. So, one, would it be in scope for the contractor to establish what a standard would be, and then it would be up to us to either accept and translate that down, you know, regulate it to eliminate the variation? But are you saying, in order to do that, we have to understand how that, how assessment, the math, how that's established in the first place? Can we just simply agree, hey, starting 2020 or whatever, this is how we're going to do commercial, residential, and here's, you know, we're just, we can make a motion and a change? Or is there something bigger that we have to do? Is that what you're trying to get to?
Yeah. The issue is, is right now, and I believe the ball should be properly in Stephen's court. I don't think anybody has ever asked him to go back and do this, and there may be an interpretation of the contract as to what extent they do under the contract and what would be a change order or an addendum. But we've got, residential is not a problem. Residential appears to be really good, and when we did the, what do you call that, benefit?
Oh, the validation, I mean, the bar.
Bond validation, I'm sorry. When we did that, that came out smooth on the residential. What we did on the commercial was check the straps. What we didn't do was check the math to verify that the properties were being done the same.
Well, in commercial, even 10 years ago versus where we are today, that landscape is significantly different, and maybe will even be more different.
What it boils down to is, is that we're charging, we're having assessments going to people that are not consecutive at all. You've got one guy.
Consistent.
Consistent, not consistent at all. You've got one guy.
Are they uniform?
I'm sorry?
Are they uniform?
No, not at all, not at all. Good example, Fairway Lakes Office Park, 10 parcels. Nine of them are exactly the same, done by what the ordinance says. The 10th one is totally different, 10th parcel. Why?
So, we need to go through an interim audit.
Well, I think.
But we need to know what the rules are.
Well, I think we know what the basis is. The question is whether or not the manager at the time in preparing the assessment rule properly or improperly applied the methodology and properly calculated and determined what the assessments were from the standpoint of preparing the assessment rules for the board. And so, I mean, I think that's something that'll be corrected, if there are any issues on this new analysis by Russ Wire, if he comes up with a new methodology approach, or even if he says, keep using the old methodology, but let's make these corrections. I think that's, you know, that's the educational component from finding out these issues.
But I don't think Russ is going in, in fact, I know Russ is not going into the detail to do what corrects a mistake right there.
But the board can modify his contract to include that as the scope. I think that would be appropriate.
Well, the reason I brought it up is.
Right. And to Mr. Tinkles' point, which is a good point, we did very similar work when we did the bond validation process, quite a bit where, you know, again.
Adjustments were made, based on acreage and or use.
We had all of the, you know, internal, external, Russ, everybody was on the phone, and we went through each of these parcels to kind of address categories, how were the EAUs calculated, all of that type of stuff. And we're going to do the same thing this time for Pelican Preserve to go through that. You know, that's going to be part of it, and Russ was helpful, a lot of folks were involved with that to make sure we got everything straightened out, and more importantly, documented.
Well, the issue is, is it's tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, that are be billed to the wrong category. That's the problem. And it's, it definitely impacts Pelican Reserve, and I thought that the disease was limited over there, but when I start checking here, found out that we got it, too. And it's people paying classifications that are paying a fee. Keep in mind, how we do all this stuff is we've got 01, 02, and 04, and we assign these costs, we divide it by the number of equivalencies, and then we take it, whether it's commercial or residential. Our problem is, is if the math is wrong on the resident, I'm sorry, the math is done wrong on the commercial, you're going to bring in a lot more revenue on the commercial side that will reduce the amount of money that the assessment is for the residential side, and/or vice versa, if it was overdone.
So, Russ will.
Russ is going to establish the parameters.
Okay.
For why, and how all of this is going to be done. And as a part of that process, because he's going to do the parameters, he's going to be attaching assessment rules, within that, we're going to be able to go through all of the individual lines. And then again, we're talking about 7,500 lines plus, that we have to go through one at a time. So, it is not something that's done every year, but, you know, kind of what we've been doing is in pieces, to try and correct a lot of this stuff over several years, as much as we can. I don't know, I don't know that I have a quantitative amount to be able to say it's hundreds of thousands. When we moved for the lake bank, actually, at the end of the day, once we got through all the mountains of trying to dig, 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 it wasn't so bad. You know, it was pretty minor, but Russ basically ultimately presented to you, I only had minor adjustments, but it was a lot of work to get to there and a lot of straps.
But keep in mind, when we did the deal for the lake bank, Pelican Reserve was exempted because they weren't included.
That's right.
That's the problem.
That's why this piece is becoming a problem now.
What I think needs to be done is that we have a committee, Chairman, to look at this and get a representative from Pelican Reserve and a representative from Gateway to work with Russ. I'm telling you, you cannot believe the man hours it takes to do this.
I would suggest, the problem is, if you have a committee, then you have to have noticed public meetings, sunshine law, and that.
So, it's.
Once again, that's just from that perspective, and that's, if that's what the board wishes, they can do that, but that's what they're going to have.
Mr. Dye?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Stephen, you and Supervisor Tinko have mentioned Pelican Reserve at least twice, if not three times in this conversation. Pelican is, of course, the newer of the areas that are under discussion, and I want you to kind of help me understand why it, why it might be such a problem.
Well, again, I have not quantitated to say how much of a problem it is.
Well, then, why did you mention it?
But because Pelican Preserve has gotten the least amount of time and attention so far in terms of us viewing it.
Is it possible it was done right the first time?
We're going to go line by line.
But is it possible it was done horribly the first time?
Again, the problem is not so much whether it's right or wrong, that's a secondary. It's not documented a hundred percent across the board to be able to say, yes, this is why it was done this way, and I've got a piece of paper to hand to you to say that.
And do you know who did it the first time?
I can only, you know, prior.
WCI?
No, I'm sure they were involved, but they're not ultimately responsible for it. It would have been a prior management company that would have worked on it.
Stephen, would it help to answer Bill's question? We heard today, because you brought it up, 2009. The easy way of doing it is taking, well, up there, that monstrous assessment roll, which are supposed to be attached as exhibits, and I've bitched about this for the last 10 years, with boards have approved them and never had the exhibits in front of them, which is a no-no, but go back through the exhibits, which I'm sure your firm has, and we have them for the other years. Pull those out. We don't have to run that whole thick deal because we're only talking the commercial straps. Pull those out and find out in what year this became a problem. And Bill, on Pelican, Pelican came into what, Gateway in?
Well, the bond issue was '03.
Three, that's what I thought.
Was the bond issue.
When did the assessment start?
Earlier than that, for the O and M probably, because, well, the district didn't have any infrastructure until after the '03 acquisition, so probably, I'm just guessing, '03.
'03, somewhere in there. But anyway, go back and find that.
Maybe it's from water management before, but I'm not sure.
Figure out what the significance of it is. But Bill, to answer your question, is yours didn't get caught because you weren't a part of the bond validation process because of the stormwater management didn't apply to you guys?
Well, first of all, I moved in to Pelican Reserve in '02, so I'm suspecting that your year is-
One or two years off.
Two earlier.
It could be.
I could tell you, I looked at all of eight, looking for something and I couldn't find it, but I didn't have anything to compare it with. If I'd had the 2009 assessment roll, you could have checked four or five straps and you know right off the bat whether they were right or wrong.
Well, there are two dozen commercial properties in Pelican Reserve right off the list.
Probably 30, 30, 40, something like that.
Mr. Banks?
Yep, a couple of things here. The first thing is, I think we should treat this as an internal initiative. And so, Chris, if I were to make a recommendation, I would say that we align Mike to kind of spearhead from an internal perspective and have him work with Stephen and whoever else he needs to pull in. I wouldn't start off with a committee at this point.
I think we need to have Russ involved.
Yeah, well, yeah, what I'm saying is, but from an internal, if this is an internal project, I would have Mike lead it, working with Stephen and Russ and whoever from Pelican or internal whatever. I wouldn't form a committee at this point. And then two, based on really the impact and the prioritization, we need to treat this as what I would consider a 2019 project, even though there is some things in flight. Because this will spin, one, there could be additional costs both to, whether it's, you know, for Stephen's time or it's going to take Mike some initial manpower, which could take him away. So there is some resources and man hours that will need to be allocated to this work. So we need to put it on our 2019 project. Or, yeah, 2019, because we're starting to kick into that right now. Anytime we have these issues come up where there's work that needs to be done and it's outside of what I would consider a low level of effort, we need to be prioritizing it, putting it on, you know, our plan, monitoring it, assigning resources. Because if we were to dump a lot of this stuff on internal staff, they may not have capacity right now to do it. And if it is a priority to get the assessment methodology complete, then we need to prioritize it and be able to fund it.
And Mr. Banks, if I could, Madam Chairman, I agree because we're going to need it in time for next year's budget cycle, so that by April, May, that we know what type of notices to send out to those parcels, which would have an increased allocation of EAUs. So that's why it's important to have it done probably by April, May for the budget purpose. Is that a fair statement, Stephen?
Probably before then, because we want to present it. It's going to take a couple of rounds to have discussion before, so.
Stephen, who prepares, who prepares the actual 100 pages of assessment with those 7,600 line items? You guys?
Yes, our assessment team does that.
Can they do this to solve the deal? And I've been working with Mike on all this, so everybody, Mike, Stephen, Russ, everybody is aware of what the issue is. The biggest problem we've got is, this stuff is blended. Can your staff go in on both Pelican and Gateway and simply separate all the commercials? Let's do it this way, separate all the residuals. So we're only dealing with 10 sheets of paper instead of 200, 300. And get the residuals out of the way, because the residuals do not appear to be a problem as long as we still stay with the concept that it's one EAU per house, whether it's a condo or a home. Makes it easy. If you can pull those, that'll make it a lot easier. Russ has been doing the same thing I'm doing. We're pulling our hair out, talking to each other. When you're looking at a packet that thick, well, I'm on page, they aren't numbered. So you've got to go to the strap and go 35, 44, 26, 00, define the thing. It's very voluminous and tough to work with unless we can get the commercials and the non-residential separated. That would help a lot.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to move to District Engineer.
So I'm Tyler Wayne, right on with Tetra Tech. Hey, just real quick, I know you guys have a time certain thing at 4:00, it's 3:55. Did you want me to go or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So we have two items on your agenda. The first is a memo that Danny had prepared. This is regarding a document that Supervisor Tinkle had prepared for connection fees and rate study analysis. Basically, Danny went through and reviewed the document and provided his thoughts and comments on it. And I think generally concurred with most of the items. There were some that he thought the pricing maybe should be different or maybe some should be developer contributed instead of Gateway paid for. But in general, I think there was concurrence between the two, so if you guys have any questions on that, I can certainly answer them.
Yeah, maybe a little explanation. The board at the last meeting wanted, when we talked about the capital improvement fund, that's what this is all about. The capital improvement fund wanted that to be, the report that I written, to be tested, ran through Tetra Tech, so that's what this is all in reference to. The results of it are on your desk as this revised enterprise capital improvement fund breakdown that is essentially, instead of listing all this as a dollar value and trying to guess the year, we said, let's divide it into two phases, possibly a project in 2020 and another project in around 2023, 2024, 2025, all depending upon when the two big growth issues that are going to impact us are coming up. And those two are Arborwood, Phase 3, and Worthington. Those are two bickies. So that's the result of this. So the sheet that you see in front of you, when we talked about the capital improvement later on, the red lines are the ones that Chris and Mike had done before that were things that changed, the things that changed. And then there's asterisks and footnotes that explain it, so.
Anything in red has been updated?
That's correct.
Okay. And if it's strike through, it's strike through.
If it's, well, there's a couple of strike throughs because I had estimated, for example, on Worthington, I think I had a water line extension and an irrigation line extension going down the FPL easement right outside the road here to go down to Worthington in the future to facilitate their 550 homes coming in.
Okay, I see.
Danny is of the opinion that those fees for Worthington would be developer contributions and not necessary.
Okay, yep, I see the footnotes.
Okay. Any other questions for Tyler on that?
Uh, no, not on that item.
Okay. Next.
Item number two, this is the task authorization status update. A couple of items to go through, I'm sure the one that probably is going to be the most discussed is the storage facility. Here's the latest on the storage facility. The South Florida permit has been resubmitted. We talked to them. I think they're generally happy. I don't foresee any issues with that.
Right on time. Sorry, Tyler.
No problem.
Hello?
Hello, this is Christopher Serns.
Hello.
I'm calling in for the meeting.
Hello, Chris, this is Tony Pierce in the voice. The first was the Chairwoman, Margaret Feinberg. I want to just introduce you. Chris is retained defense counsel retained by the district's insurance carrier to defend and represent the district in the DeFeo versus Gateway Services Community Development District ADA lawsuit. And Chris, I don't, won't speak to you, but the primary purpose of today's presentation by Chris is for him to request a closed-door session according to the Florida statutes at a date and time certain with participants to be named, court reporter, manager, the board, Chris and myself, if he wants me there, for a closed-door session for litigation strategy. And Chris, it's your floor.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Christopher Serns. The Florida League of Cities has retained me to represent Gateway Services District in a lawsuit that was filed. It's an ADA slash Rehabilitation Act claim where the plaintiff is basically asserting that our website is inaccessible to him because he is blind and is requesting certain accommodations. And they're also seeking changes to the website and the payment of attorney fees, things like that. I've received a proposed demand roughly from the plaintiff's attorney and he intends to send me a written settlement demand that I would like to meet with you all in private and discuss how we want to address this claim, how we want to respond and if you want to settle or if we want to litigate it. At that time, I will give you all the background on to these claims as to what's going on statewide and explain it in greater detail. Certainly would want Tony to attend and would appreciate it if you would all coordinate and assist me in setting that and I can update you and meet you all in person.
Okay, and Chris, the board has an extra regular board meeting is August 16th. And if we could have the closed-door session, board members, before the beginning of that meeting, I can't, Chris, you estimate what, an hour long at the most for a closed-door session?
Yeah, I would estimate really it would be about 30 minutes, to be honest.
And then after that, an open session, the board could take action in response to what happened at the closed-door session, so.
If they needed to, there may not be anything to do at that time because we don't really have a deal, but they'd really be giving me ideas as to how we see this claim and how we'd like to proceed.
So Madam Chairman, the board, what time would be good on August 16?
You're not going to get it done in half an hour. We can't do nothing in a half an hour.
Doug, if you, maybe if you keep quiet, we could.
Is everyone available at 2:30 on the 16th of August?
2 o'clock.
You want to make it two?
Play it safe.
Mr. Banks?
Are we going to meet here or are we going to meet at the church?
I would suggest a closed-door session be here because it'd be more difficult to have the separate room going into it just for the board, manager, attorneys, and the court reporter.
So 2 o'clock here for this meeting, or for that meeting? That's fine.
Mr. Banks?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. 2 PM on August 16th.
I will be there.
And Chris, I'll coordinate with you and Chris on the court reporter and the notice for that.
Very good. Sounds good. I look forward to meeting you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Tyler.
I'm back. Okay, so here's where we left off. Storage facility, two permits that we're trying to get right now. One is from South Florida for the ERP. That's an environmental resource permit, that's for stormwater. Second one is from Lee County, that's for the development order. Long story short, ERP, done deal, waiting on issuance of the permit. DO, more complicated. What the major hang-up in the DO is, is that the fire department is insisting on providing hydrants on the site. I have my own personal disagreement with that, but my opinion doesn't really matter. So, here's the problem with it. I think Danny updated you guys on this last time and I think the consensus was, well, just add the hydrant out there. Well, the problem with doing that is, the closest water main that I can find to get a hydrant from is about 1,500 feet away. And 1,500 feet of 10-inch water main is not that cheap. So you could pretty easily spend $75,000 to $100,000 to do it. So, we're trying to find an alternative way to satisfy the comment. Somehow or another, the OAK parcel is fed with water and I don't really know how it is. I think somewhere through the plant site, we were going to work with Chris and try to figure that out, but that's not in concrete yet.
Would that be closer?
That would be closer.
Okay.
So there's a lot of, you know, is the line big enough? Can it provide fire service or is it disproportable water service? There's a lot of stuff to work out there.
Is that a non-negotiable from the?
Basically, I argued with them for about an hour and it came down to, this is their response. If we want to argue it out with fire marshal, we can. I don't think that's going to be successful.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One more question. So the closest additional fire hydrant is where?
Right out, at the end of the street.
Okay. So in a worst-case scenario, you'd have to run a line.
I thought there was one.
Or you have a tank.
Out by the plane.
500 feet maximum.
It's stored at the plant and one in the OAK halfway up in their parking lot, but we don't know how it's fed.
What's the design criteria?
Well, here's the issue. Lee County Land Development Code says you've got to put a hydrant if you have a public water system for your development. We don't have a public water system for that development. There's no infrastructure out there. So the requirement is, the fire department wants it because they want it. Their issue that they're citing is because RVs are going to be stored on site and RVs have LP and they're concerned about the store developing long-term and that's their concern.
But I mean, are we talking 1,500 gallon minute, three hours? What are we leading to?
Oh, you're talking about for fire flow?
Yes.
They haven't given any specifics. It's normally commercial is 1,500 gallon minute, 20 PSI residual.
So that means then that we're looking at an 8-inch line probably to be effective minimum.
Well, you've got to have a 10 because Lee County Land Development Code says you've got to extend minimum 10 inch.
Mrs. Flaherty?
My question is, do you have a letter from the fire department?
Yes.
Why don't we have a copy of that letter in our book so we can see exactly what they're talking about?
I can give you the denial letter if you'd like a copy of it.
Yeah, I mean, and they're specifically about what they want? Do they say what they want? I mean-
The written letter that we have says, I don't remember the exact word, but provide fire hydrants on site. So we have been for a good while now trying to satisfy that comment beyond providing them on site. And we have so far been unsuccessful. The reason I tell you now is, it's pretty simple just to go add one, but it's a big chunk of change that I don't, I certainly wasn't expecting, and I don't think you guys were either.
I can see if you had to run it from the street, but if we have hydrants back there, can't we just tap off of those?
Again, I don't know how and where those are fed and how big they are and-
A lot of those are tapped off 6-inch lines. That's the problem.
So, you know, we plan on working with Gateway and trying to see if we can use those. And it would be great if we can, I'm just saying, I'm not sure yet.
Okay. Mrs. Flaherty?
So that might be my question, can we find out if we could use those? I mean, because this has been going on since July of last year.
It's a good long time?
Yes.
Is the building, the OAK building on our, Chris, is it on our water service? They pay Gateway water? So then we must have a main that goes out there. Shake it because you know what the next one's going to be. I take it we don't have any AS builds that show where it is?
We haven't found it yet and we were going to ask the Oracle Terry, but he wasn't at work last week, so it'd be, wait till next week and see if he has any idea where anything is, but so far we have not.
Because that's a relatively new building. So there has to be something in the way of a plan upstairs for OAK, I would think, that where we had an off-site extension of a line or a tap. But my problem's going to be, is I would be guessing if it's anything greater than a 6-inch, which doesn't, doesn't help us.
And, you know, maybe we can say, hey, listen, you know, there's a 6-inch that's much closer, you know, can we look into providing less flow of water because it's much closer and, you know, obviously it's a huge economic difference there? I don't know. There's a lot of items that are still kind of hanging out there, you know. Step one is, if we can find record drawings for that hydrant and see where it feeds from and whose it is, great, let's do that. That's step one.
Okay. And is it possible, if we were to come to some type of agreement where there's a short-term solution through, was it the OAK?
Yeah, OAK has the building out there.
So a short-term solution to, at least at a minimum, provide water if water is needed. A longer-term solution could possibly, as continued development does happen that way, is it possible for, you know, for something in the, you know, next couple of years to be able to meet the requirements? It's just, right now, it's just not feasible for us to, you know, to meet. I think the requirement as it states, I don't know how much negotiation power we potentially have, but-
Well, this has ramifications because if we're going to be building on this site, those trailers have got to go.
Yeah.
They're going to go.
Yeah, I mean...
So, we've got to do A to be able to do B.
So, one of the other things that I was thinking about chasing down was, and I don't know if this is going to fly or not, but the development next door to Timber Creek is going to back right up to that parcel. Now, it's not going to be Gateway water, but, you know, potentially fire service could be fed through there. You know, you get into some questions about, you know, private hydrants off their water systems and...
It's touchy.
But, it's a lot shorter run if we had to do it that way.
But they may not be building for a year or two either.
Again, that's another thing. You know, another thing that I flew past the fire department is, well, what if we just don't allow, you know, LP to be stored and just say, you know, RVs must not have LP on them or something like that? And then they said, well, there's still lightning protection to be worried about, and I don't know if that's going to work either.
Chris, did anybody go upstairs and look for OAK's plans?
No.
Okay. That's the next step, is check OAK or nothing else. We just call them. I mean, hell, they're right here.
I think Mrs. Flaherty hit...
Isn't there a fire hydrant near the soccer field? I mean, not the soccer field, the dog park?
Not that I know of.
No?
There's one right here.
What was that?
It was a decoration for the dogs.
Oh, okay. I mean, I know I saw them.
But who knows?
That's to raise a leg on.
That is funny.
This is too good.
You know, another item that, you know, it's another option to run down is there's the raw water line that comes from the well that's out there, and I don't know if this is getting into too many details with you guys, but we thought about, okay, well, what if we provide a hydrant off that raw water line? But then, that line has to maintain, you know, service to feed a hydrant, and if it doesn't necessarily always do that because the well doesn't constantly run and...
Yeah, it's a pain.
Doug, I don't think it's going to be essentially a profitable operation.
No, I mean, I don't know, it's taken us a year to get this far. I mean, I think whatever we've got to do, we've got to escalate it because now we're starting to back up projects on top of that that are dependent, so...
We've got to get the OAK answer right off the bat to know definitively that we're going to have to spend $1,000, $1,500 a 10-inch pipe. That's going to make or break the deal.
So, there we go.
So, that's what's up with that one.
So, what's your next steps on there?
Try to figure out where that OAK hydrant is fed from and whose it is. I don't even know if it's a public hydrant or if it's a private because there's a lot of private hydrants also.
All right.
So, you know, there may be, even if we can get to that, it may be something that we have to pay an easement from them to even access and run line from there.
And then it's a matter of sitting down with the fire marshal and negotiating or coming up with solutions?
Yes.
And who sits in that meeting, historically?
Um...
Who's been talking to him to date? You and Danny?
To date, me and Danny. But we haven't, so far, we're just talking to the plans reviewer at the fire department.
Mr. Southrill?
Southrill.
You could fill out the dog park hydrants out there, see if that works.
Take the orange right out of mine?
Paint it red.
They open it up. I actually had that done before when I worked for Fernando County Utilities. I went to inspect commercial. Where's the hydrant? It was out there yesterday. The guy went, got the hydrant, put it in. Fire guy came by and checked off.
No.
That's a true story.
Brilliant.
I think going upstairs in the hot box and finding the plans and recalling OAK, you'll have it solved in an hour.
Let's do that. Let's solve it in an hour.
Anything else, Tyler?
Um, let me see. Anything really pressing or new on the rest of these? Um, no, I don't think so, unless you guys have questions on these other items here. We can definitely answer them, but, uh, no.
I think Mr. Tinklin has some questions.
Yeah, I can't remember. Did we, as a board, authorize you to prepare for the next meeting, a proposal for the hydraulic study for the South Florida Water Management District as a result? I thought we did, but I didn't remember.
I believe so. Danny went to the last meeting, and I know he told me about it, but I think so.
Well, I want to make sure that we did. And then the second thing is, is that if what Pankos said is true, to be able to get SRF funding and long-term scatter this 6, 7, 8 million dollars of construction out with a bond issue, SRF, low interest rate, we're going to need to have a facility plan. That might be premature for the next meeting, but the meeting afterwards would be certainly a possibility.
I'm sorry, we're talking about storm pipe cleaning or...
What are you talking about?
We were talking about this a while ago, the RED deal that Tyler brought up, the report. We've identified all lease construction, water, wastewater, and irrigation needs for the community. We can get SRF bond money to avoid using our reserves to fund this like you would be building a building and a home mortgage. We can fund it and over, with a 20-year bond issue at 2% and...
We'd have to validate it again.
We have to validate it, no doubt about that. But it's monies that's available that doesn't show up like we've got right now, something like $7 million sitting there on the books. That's, I totally agree with what Jim said earlier, that's, you don't do that. Utilities bond the work. Everyone bonds the work. And we have an opportunity to use the cheapest bond you can possibly get, but we've got to do a facility plan. So, my thing is, and they said they will allow us to do one facility plan for everything and then even allow us to phase it and put in applications as we need to draw on it, which you can't get a better deal. What we would like to do, or what I'd like to do, is get a confirmation of that from Pankos, then have you guys start on that facility plan because you're looking at a year to year and a half away if you go the SRF route before you can head toward construction because you've got to go through facility plan, then you've got to go through design, get all of it approved by them, then bid it, then start construction. So, it's at least a year, year and a half.
Okay.
And that's about the timeline. We're going to be needing that stuff in 2020. But it's the one way to keep the rates and charges that we have in the community and the assessments down is to bond finance. I don't see any other way of doing it.
Anything else, Tyler?
Um, no, ma'am. I don't know if there are other items that you would like for us to partake in on the agenda.
I have your table, may I?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Who put this together?
Which one's that?
That's our budget. That's internal.
We did.
Okay, well, it looks similar but not identical to what's in the budget.
Right. Those changes that you seen in the RED and that additional sheet were the ones proposed by Mr. Tinklin as compared to the original CIP that's in the budget.
That we talked about at the last meeting that you said to have Tetra Tech validate the numbers.
Well, this is a lot of money for one thing. Second place thing, if we're going to have sheets passed out individually like this, could you at least need them so we'll know when they were prepared?
Mr., we'll take care of that and the author.
Author would be good.
We're talking about items that are paid for by connection fees though, right?
I'm sorry?
We're talking about items to be paid for by the connection fees? That's what we're talking about?
No. The report that I wrote on, yeah, the report I wrote on connection fees that identified water sewer and reuse capital needs going forward to meet current needs and future needs, build out. The board at the last time said they wanted Tetra Tech to validate it. That's what you have done. And then Mike and I, I don't know where Mike went, if he was here. There he is. Mike and I then went through and put the items based upon Danny's letter into two phases. Phase one being stuff in 2020, phase two being stuff being five years later. And so, that's what this represents.
Thank you very much.
Can you just ask any other questions for Tyler? Okay, thank you.
With that being said, I don't think there's any other items really for us on the agenda, so...
I think you're correct.
If you need us to, we'll stick around, but if not, we'll go work on some projects.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
See you tomorrow.
Keep looking for the clock up there.
We're getting a new one.
Okay. Action items. Approve expenditures landscaping Pelican Preserve. 4A.
And this was P-PAC approved by them. It's just upgrading some landscaping in Portofino, the cul-de-sac. They had a discussion about, folks wanted a little more than they were doing under the basic, but these were the proposals that came through and for Ameriscape to do that work. And Mr. Meezy, do you have anything to...
Phil Meezy representing P-PAC. This particular item, the part on Portofino is actually not correct because what we did was we told Portofino we would just, this was damage that was done by Irma to their cul-de-sac. We told them that we would only pay to put it back to where, what it had been, and they wanted to do something fancier. So, we are, we said we would only contribute $2,600 toward the work that they want done. They want to do $10,000 worth of work. We're only going to put 2,600 into it. So, the total, the total here would be more like about $12,000 for these two items because the one is not 10,000, it's 2,600.
Are we, are we being asked to approve this?
Yes.
The way it is?
Yeah. Well, I think you should approve it. I don't think it needs to be approved the way it is. In other words, I think it's, it would be, you know, about $8,000 less than is shown here.
So, what is the, what's the total expenditure? Do you know, Phil? I used the 2,600 for one.
Yeah, 2,600 for one and then the 10,514 for the other.
I've got the 20,969.50, and if you take $8,000 off that, you've got 12,969.50.
It's really, it's really 10,514 plus 2,600 is what you're moving.
So, that's 13,000.
Yeah.
So, you want us to approve the expenditure out of the OO2 fund for $13,000?
That's correct.
13,114.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. For 13,114.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. District Office Site Development.
Yes, at the last meeting, the board asked us to get a proposal to bring forward to do a preliminary master plan to include all those different elements. We got a proposal from Exceptional Engineering to put that together. And what we'd like to do is come back at the next board meeting during that workshop time and let the engineer explain to you how to develop the site plan and work with you on some of the elements you want to see. And then that contract includes him coming back and having a couple more follow-up meetings. But then you're getting into size of building, number of recreational facilities, a few soil borings, some hard information for site development should you choose to go up to the Commons pool. So, it was a $6,400 estimate that we got. Tony made some comments on the proposal from Exceptional Engineering. I was going to tell you, Tony, I never use any of their verbiage. I take our three-page standard. If there's a loan, sign our...
Thank you.
I never say anything that comes from a vendor like that. I send them ours.
That contract was a joke.
Thanks.
Question, why are we going outside when Tetra Tech's our engineer?
I was really looking for somebody that's doing site plan development, and quite honestly, when I have projects that are sitting out a year or two back, you know, I need the work done.
Well, I looked at this website for this company and shaky to me.
Shaky, is that the word?
Shaky, yeah. When I saw that contract, it looked very shaky. You don't write contracts like that. No way. But the bigger, bigger question is, I understand where you're coming from. But going to the Gateway Commons site, I don't know that we, have we gone that far because I thought the last meeting, we were really leaning toward putting it right here.
A temporary building. A temporary building right here, I think, was what we were looking for.
Well, it's a little bit different. We said that if we're going to spend X for a temporary building, it's just a little bit more than we could possibly sell the temporary building. Why invest the money in the temporary building? Just build the permanent building and be done with it and put it right out here. Now, there is a limitation, and that was what, X, 3,000 square feet?
About that, I'll have to look back.
Was the max that we can put on the site, and the plan was 2,150 or something like that for the temporary. I think the question I was looking at seeing is, one, how would that temporary and/or permanent building look out here? How's it going to fit? But now, we got introduced another problem tonight, and that is a 10-inch water line maybe that is going to make it very difficult for us to get rid of these facilities. I don't know what, do we have a rental agreement here that we're stuck into for a year or two to get rid of the boats and all the vehicles?
In this case, I believe that's month-to-month. I don't think there's any long-term leases signed.
So, we could tell them all that come October 1, they're all, have to be gone?
Go see Uncle Bob.
I'm sorry.
Go see Uncle Bob.
Go see Uncle Bob. But my point was, is that I just kind of gathered at the last meeting, we had dropped back from going to the Commons that we're going to stick to this site.
I didn't get that impression.
So, you think we're going, still going to the Commons?
Taking a look, yeah.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Before we go to the Commons, I'd like a survey sent out to the residents to see what they would like. I don't think we just come up with some kind of plan and maybe the residents have some suggestions. And since it's their money, I think it should come from them. That's my suggestion.
To be able to put a temporary building out here, how many people would be displaced that have storage, that are storing boats and campers and trailers here?
Nobody would be displaced. The spot that we looked at putting that modular unit on is the squared green area where the generators are sitting down and moving that equipment behind the building. So, we weren't really planning on putting it there. We were planning on putting it right in the middle in that grass area with the pavement all around.
But you wouldn't have any parking or anything?
Yeah, the parking is a big issue.
Parking's a big issue. You wouldn't have any room.
But we're, we're looking at having a place to add employees, so we're not looking at bringing in 50 cars. We're looking at bringing in, you know, one or two employees, which means one or two vehicles.
Well, that is if we go the short term of the temporary facility. But if we go and find out that we're going to pay half again as much to put in a permanent, why do the temporary, especially if somebody said that we could sell it down the road possibly? The issue is right now, if we're going to do anything to be able to compare apples and apples, is that if we're going to have these guys come in and do the study, do the study for both sites so we have the answers to know how we're going to go with this thing.
And maybe they'll be telling us if...
Because again, it's a plan only.
So, there'll be, we've got to have some professionals. This continually having surprises like 10-inch water lines, you know, at the last minute just irks the dickens out of me when we thought we had this thing all set up and all of a sudden, we don't have it all set up.
Well, the thing is, is that if we're going to look at a plan, and what we're talking about this guy doing is putting together, as I read this, is it's a concept plan. It's a footprint of how a building would look down there on that site.
That's right.
And my deal is if we're going to do that, do it on both sites.
When you have a small building, you always have an artist's rendition with the flagpole and the flags and the birds and the clouds. It's something that's pretty, so you get an idea of what's possible.
Well, the bigger issue here is, is that, one, what's the size of it, which goes back to what I think Kathleen was talking about. But if you go to the public, just keep in mind, there is a second option. Don't do nothing. So, I don't know why, I think the job is ours, and the job is ours is to get the research, then we go out and indicate what we're doing. But our first need, as you pointed out, Margaret, is staffing, is staffing. The issue is, can that be done? And our best bet is to put something out here temporarily and forget this for a year, two years, three years? Or is the best thing to do is to immediately go to the building either here or there? My problem with here is, is you aren't going to go permanent until and unless you have what you're going to do with these RVs.
Yeah, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue, and I think, I agree with Bill. We have to plan things out. You have to look at what our needs are today, where it's going to be next year, three years, five years, 10 years from now. We've got a resource issue today. We've got employees stacked on top of each other. They're having confidential conversations in an open environment. We've got utilities folks that can't even sit down at a desk and get anything done. So that's an immediate issue from a resource. But there's also capacity. Capacity is another component to expansion. When we originally started talking about the storage unit, the first benefit was to, to create some space so we could use it for, you know, for machines and, you know, utility trucks and then potentially maybe expand the building. And so that's where we got started on the storage additional facility. And there's revenue possibilities, so. But we're a year away, or a year after that piece, and that's a key dependency. But getting back to what Bill's commented, the reason we even started looking at the Commons areas is because we own that land. You know, we went to the Girl Scout, that fell through. We're trying to find a cheaper solution. If we own the land, building something on that property would in theory be cheaper. But I think we need to look at a side-by-side comparison. And I thought that's kind of where we went with this temporary component. It was a cheap solution to give us some time so we continue to vet things out. But I almost think we need a side-by-side comparison of, okay, if we go short-term here, long-term at Commons Park, what is that cost benefit? What does it, what does it give us capability, resources, what value to the community? And from a cost and funding perspective? Or if the cost to add a temporary is almost as close to a permanent, then we've got to look at that. But we need a very holistic plan and someone that's professional that says, if, if you build this, this is a throwaway because you're going to do a permanent solution over here, and here's what you're going to spend on that. Or here's the recommendation of, you know, a permanent fixture here, you table the second location. I just don't feel like I'm in a position where I have enough information to make an educated decision on which property we should go with. But what I do know is, we need space today, and we need to build capability so Chris and his team can continue to build out internal capability that provides cost-saving, higher quality, all the things, internal accountability, all the things that we're trying to push for in a board. So Chris, however we need to do, partner with Tetra Tech or whoever to get something done. But again, the dependency is going to be that storage, that storage facility. We can't move anyone. And I'm not going to be the person to pick up a phone and tell somebody they've got to move their trailer over somewhere else and double or triple their cost. I mean, that's, I'm not going to do it. We may have to, but I'm not making.
I agree with all that, but here's the problem, guys. Maybe I'm not saying it right. Where is this architect that we're hiring? We haven't told him what we want. How's he going to put a plan in when we haven't even told him what we want?
Haven't you told him what we want?
I've talked to him. I don't know him from Adam.
Well, I figured you would have talked to him, but.
No.
Well, it's pretty easy to do a needs assessment.
But I mean, this, this deal here, this proposal, since he's going to do a concept plan, well, a concept plan is when, I would tell him, I want a 4,000-square-foot building. I want a 2,000-square-foot building to do a footprint. A concept plan's only as good as that. Otherwise, he's going to come back with a 5,000 or 6,000-square-foot building, or he's going to come back with one.
We need to define that because.
We need to define that before we go to the work.
In Jim's opening statement, and he's calling it a Taj Mahal, and I don't think we're trying to build a Taj Mahal. So we need to specify exactly what we're trying to accomplish.
That's my point.
And the first piece that we're trying to do is, it would be an administrative building because we need this as a utilities facility. And anything else that comes after that would be, you know, based on board's recommendation and what the community needs, but.
And that's where I'm, I'll just say it again, that brings us back to putting a temporary building out here so that he can spread staff out, so you can get staffs where they're more, they're, they're able to do their work more efficiently. And that also, by being able to build out staff temporarily, that allows us time to say, what do we want to do permanent?
That's what I thought, that's the direction I thought we were going in. And now it's gotten really cloudy. A temporary solution, put it out here, let's get our people out there, and let's assess if we're not in a rush to come up with a plan and spend a lot of money right now and we don't even know what we want. Now we're going to have to rush into a requirement session, a session, needs. I think if we need to stay in one direction for once and not get sidetracked and try to do two or three different things, let's focus on what our need is right now, which is a temporary building that's cost-effective, that solves a problem, and then let's take our time and develop out a plan and a funding solution, all these different things.
The issue was, that got complicated at the last time we discussed this, was, can we build a building permanent on this site for a little bit more and not have a throwaway to 100,000? That's the question that hasn't been answered yet.
But I have a feeling that that temporary building will end up being there longer than what we think it will. We're not having to displace anybody that's storing anything here. And, and it just appears to me that we need to be able to support our staff, and that's the most important thing.
Well, if that's the case, then why, why are we looking at the Commons Park? Just have him give us the site on a temporary building right out here with how it would go with a permanent building and be done with it?
Well, I think we do that first to solve the problem. And then we still continue at looking at long, long-range, you know, solutions to, to this. So I mean, that's, that would be my opinion.
Okay. I've talked to Mr. Kraft about this, and Mr. Kraft has worked in a temporary building. Could he come up and? Thank you.
Okay. FGC where I worked, we put up, we were asking the state for, for an admin building. And they wouldn't give us the money. So it was kind of like our stat that we just keep building these modulators. And look, we've now spent that money, and now we just have modulators. I worked in one. We built, they were large ones. I mean, we spent anywhere from like 1.1 to 1.6 million on them. They were 30 offices, conference rooms, multimedia rooms. When Irma was coming in, they called us off two days before the weekend for the storm. And when we all left, we all looked at each other and said, see you in six months, this thing's gone. And none of them even had a lease. And we, they have useful lives of 10 years. We had three or four that were pushing 15 years. And I mean, you have to paint the outside of them every five, six years, but they're not necessarily a one, two, three-year thing. You can resell them. They're not that bad to work in. Everybody's kind of like, I'm going from a building to a trailer. But it, everybody's happy because they at least had an office. They had their own office and furniture, their own filing cabinets. So I mean, it is something that you spend 200, $250,000, and it can give you not just two or three years to figure this out, it can give you five, seven, 10 years to maybe get some of these other projects out of the way that we're trying to find money for, and then maybe go to something like that. That's.
So are you saying then, the best from a financial perspective is to go to a temporary facility?
I would think. And I know it's, I don't know if I want to say temporary, but kind of a long-term temporary. I mean, they don't last forever, but they, they do last. They are, they have a 10-year useful life easily.
They do the plan here on this site and be done with it.
Yeah, and we'll continue to vet it out.
Right.
Well, that's true.
Yes.
Mike, did you get SRF Long-Term Financing to purchase or construct this thing?
Yeah, they won't do that.
Maybe we can get some FEMA trail.
There you go. You've got to look at the whole picture. And I, and I know what you say is right because the school district's been using these temporary things forever and ever and ever. But if you talk to them, most of them say they'd rather be in the permanent building so they don't have to run around in the rain to go see the principal all the time or whatever they're doing. It's a solution, but it's not a, it's not a perfect solution by any means. And if we're going to start being responsible for another 8, 10, 12 million dollars worth of capital improvements on an enterprise fund, as Mr. Tinko just handed to us, we're going to be, we're going to be needing more staff members than, than we think we're going to need. This is, this is, this is big time. This is big-time stuff.
But it's not O and M-related stuff. In fact, it helps our O and M tremendously. Good example, de-irrigation, de-irrigation. We just can't maintain what we've got because we don't have the capacity. Put it that way. We don't have the capacity.
I'm going to bring the discussion back to this agenda item, which is, what are we going to do about the Exceptional Engineering contract that Chris brought before us?
I think we'd hold that item.
So you want to just table it?
I would like, I would like to table this.
Who's going to do the, the footprint and the stuff for which we make decisions of how you go? You've got to do something. We've got to do something because we're sat here without data.
Here's, you mean, in our holistic plan?
No, in the.
Or you're talking just the temporary?
The plan to do the temporary.
Well, that shouldn't be that complicated, right, Chris? I mean, I think you already have requirements and specs for what you need.
See, the thought was, is to get this plan, this concept plan, have this guy, as I read this, he's going to run it through the gauntlet to verify that we can build it with the county. That's the idea.
We're not building anything, though. I mean, it's.
Yeah, if we were going to put a temporary structure in here, we'd have to go through for a development order and a change in land use here and do similar things, show them, it's going here, here's where the water is.
We need documents. And this is what I would assume that he would be able to prepare. So we've got to go through that step sooner or later. The only issue is, do you do it here or the Commons Park?
No, you don't, here's, like, if there were, if there were, if we were, if we were going to use someone like this for, that has experience or expertise in, in building much larger site plans and, you know, doing this building versus the Commons Park conceptual compare, and that's fine. But I think at this point, that's not what we're doing. We're looking at a temporary, a temporary building that we're going to put on a plot. We already know where it goes. So why not we go through our internal, go through Tetra Tech, have them do everything they need to do for this? It's, that's a low-level effort, I would imagine.
You could do that.
And then let's get back to what, what we're, what we're, one of the items we're supposed to do at our board advance a while back. Let's set up another working session. We're going to do long-term facility planning where we're going to discuss what items we need, what Chris's vision is for the next two, five, 10 years, based on our growth, what we need. Will our growth require this to be in a utility facility because, you know, because of the expansion? And we need to have an administrative building in another location. I mean, that's a conversation that we need to be having. But right now, I think we, we table this item. We, I mean, I would make a motion to have Chris work with Tetra Tech in order to, you know, do whatever needs to be done in order to get the, the temporary building secured and allocate the fundings in, you know, based on our original estimates to go ahead and let's proceed.
We, we need to know all the costs. That building is one part of this. We got the utilities to mess with, you got furniture, you got all that stuff together. Let them do that footprint, let them do that footprint, show us how it's going to work, temporary, temporary.
They did that already. Yes, brought that forward.
Was that building and furniture and I think it was?
On a site plan? I haven't seen anything that's ready to go to the development order. You get something ready to go to a development order?
They have to be out of the building and the cost of the furniture, square footage cost for the two modules.
It's very preliminary stuff. That won't get you into a development order. We need more detail. But Tetra Tech can provide that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That should be like, like Danny likes to say, low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
To me, it's easy if we don't have a utility issue. If we don't have a utility issue.
If I may mistake, one of the reasons we talked to Exceptional Engineering, I guess you don't like their contracts, but they've done four schools and about a half a dozen other public facilities, you know, all the site plans approvals.
I was, I was looking for something on their website that was similar to what we're talking about doing, and I couldn't find it.
Public, public facilities.
One more thing, Mrs.
Go ahead. Yes, Mr. Guy.
I, I feel, but I know where the conversation is going. And I don't want to beat a dead horse. But we've got a very nice piece of bakeries up, up there near the Commons Pool.
Yes, we do.
And we have had residents come to us and ask us about pickleball and bocce and softball fields and all of that stuff. And we put them off to this point and done absolutely nothing, thinking that we were going to, that we were going to meld this all together into, 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 into one project. Well, I'm getting a feeling now that, that that's all going away, and I don't like that feeling.
I agree, Bill. I think we should be doing the park totally separate, and at the same time, bocce ball and a pickleball court is a no-brainer to do. It's so easy.
Mrs. Flaherty, I know you had your hand up.
Okay, Mr. Banks tabled this, okay?
He moved, there's no, no second yet.
No, I know. But he's, want our table, could you tell me when to table it to? Because usually if you just table it, it's just till the next meeting, and I think you want to table it longer than that?
Yeah, I, I would table it until Chris comes back with a definitive action or next steps regarding the temporary plan and execution. Because until we understand that, that's, that's, that's the priority is, is the temporary. And then when that, then when that is done, I think we need to go back and look. Because I don't disagree with you, Bill. I think there's, there, there needs to be other things in this, in this community. But they should be, I think, planned a little bit.
Yeah.
A little bit better.
And I don't disagree with you either. It's just that we're having difficulty maintaining what we already have, like the pool area. And to add more things to an already stretched staff that they're going to have to be maintaining just doesn't seem like the right direction to go immediately. So I think we're looking at, we're looking at a long-term plan of what we want for the community, not, oh, we need to quickly put out tennis courts and pickleball and bocce. We, it's, we need a, a plan. But the temporary building out here is going to allow us to support staff and giving them the space to do the best job that they can do. And that's services what we provide the community with. So that's my opinion, anyway.
Mark, one of the issues, getting back to the site, this is where the engineer or whoever we retain is going to do. You go out there and put that building, and if that building is set for eight people or so many square foot, kind of like you can tell you come back and they're going to tell you, you've got to have one, one and a half parking spots per place. Where they're going. That's the kind of stuff you pay this guy to do, to tell you, so that hopefully a problem doesn't come down the road and you spend a lot of money and then find out, well, I can't do this. So let, let the, I like the idea, just retain Tetra Tech to come up with a concept plan of a temporary facility out there and make sure that we can take it to and get a DO approved.
All right. With that, okay. Is that a motion?
Is that, is that your motion, Doug?
Yeah, that is.
I'll second it.
So my motion is to table, I got to get this, motion to table until Chris comes back with a plan after Tetra Tech comes back with a plan?
And I think part of the motion would also be to authorize Tetra Tech and the manager to come back for the task authorization.
Well, yeah, that's the next step.
Or authorize the task authorization.
Yeah, that's the next step, is they come back with a proposal.
Yes.
But I think we need to delineate to everybody, because we still haven't made the decision. Are we going to stick with what I think Chris and staff has already gone through? Chris, are you satisfied with 2150?